Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Chaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations today. Dan would like to acknowledge a couple birthdays in the community this past weekend. I guess one's today.
Okay, one's today. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm pleased and proud to announce and give a shout out to Kelly Houts. Kelly Houts is celebrating his 95th birthday today, October 16th, and we wish Kelly well. He's been a great person to know, and he's a friend of the mayor's and a friend of mine. And Kelly Houts is on his 95th birthday, so congratulations, Kelly.
Not quite to a smucker's jar, or whatever that is.
Right.
He'll make it.
He'll make it.
Not quite.
Items two through 13B constitute consent agenda. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by the council member. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item should come up at the podium as I read that agenda item. Anybody wanting to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns at the end of the meeting. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council meetings of August 9, 2023. Three is a resolution opposing the construction and operation of hazardous CO2 pipelines in and near the city of Sioux City.
I had some questions about that one. I just wanted to stop for conversation. I didn't know if we had received any additional information than what was provided, Mayor, to you, just about...
You had a booklet I gave you.
No, I meant beyond that.
Oh, no.
That's what I was asking. Because I didn't know, there are certain parts of it that I guess I have concerns about with the pipe and with the lines and things like that, but there are other things that I guess I don't understand as far as, obviously, I don't want to deter any development or South Bridge, or if there is that, but I didn't have any information that said if there were setbacks, how far that was, or what that was looking like. I did reach out to Mr. McGowan as well with the chamber, trying to request additional information from some of our larger industries, asking them about insight, because I would imagine, especially with a state that produces a lot of ethanol, that there might be a benefit to them being able to join some of these pipelines. At least, I know that's what I've been hearing. And so I didn't know if any of those companies had reached out. He said that none had, but that individuals themselves had just reached out about the eminent domain process. And I understand some of those concerns in going about that. But I guess the question then begs about the eminent domain portion was, you know, whether our ordinance would carry the weight of it impacting that, or whether that would just be a workaround anyway, or if we would be superseded by what the Woodbury County supervisors passed, if we would fall under that. I mean, they already submitted their opposition. I just had some additional questions and didn't know what other information we had received.
That's all we've had.
I wonder about the governor leading the charge for it, because if she is in favor of it, which I believe she is, is that going to supersede anything we say?
Oh, yeah.
It will?
Yeah, I didn't know. And Dolph, I didn't mean to call you in there. I know we had a conversation as well, and I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words or not, or if anyone else in the community wanted to speak on the item. I didn't know. Because I'm fine deferring as well and asking for that, so I can try to gather more information where I would feel more informed about the decision, but I can do that as well. I just, I understand concerns about eminent domain, I completely do, but I just wanted to at least work through, because I would think that there are a lot of companies that would benefit from being able to sequester some of that, working with the ethanol. And obviously, that's highly important to our farmers and to our community, and I think that we could go through.
Terra produces a lot, too.
Yeah. And I thought cargo might and other, yeah, other industries that are in our community, so I just...
Pretty much the ethanol plants.
Yeah. Well, that's a huge, because coal, liquid, or whatever, they capture that CO2 at Terra.
Yeah. Well, and I got thinking about it, and I don't know if Tom is here, but I was trying to call him and touch base with him today, and we were playing phone tags, so it didn't work out. But I was thinking about, even at the wastewater treatment plant, you know, we capture a lot of that gas, compress it, and then insert it into a pipeline that's already existing in order to do a very similar process. I understand it might not be apples to apples, but, you know, it just seems like we would want to be good stewards of the environment in any way that we can. And I understand, you know, private companies, giving them the power of eminent domain makes a lot of people uneasy, and I understand that. But I just, there were a lot of questions that I had, that I certainly...
I'd like you to get some...
Yeah, whether we want to defer this, and I can try to gather more, or...
Make a motion.
I can just vote no. It doesn't...
Pull it for a separate roll call vote, then, and make your motion.
I would be in favor of deferring it, if you want to make a motion to defer.
That's fine. We just got to get a motion.
Sure. I would pull to defer this item for, what's the date? And let's go two weeks.
I don't believe there's a meeting. That might be the 5th.
The 30th is the 5th Monday of October. Okay, the next one.
Yeah, what's the one after that?
Monday, November 6th.
Sounds good.
November 6th. So I would move to defer this item to be brought back on November 6th.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Chaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Four is a resolution approving fiscal year 24 Phase II Home Investment Partnership Program funding award for 1424 Summit Street. Five is a resolution authorizing an execution of a request for release of funds and certification of environmental review pursuant to HUD regulations in connection with the CDB grant program. Six are resolutions authorizing the police department to apply for a governor's traffic safety bureau grant from the Iowa Department of Public Safety. Seven's a resolution amending community development's payroll complement by adding one part-time administrative secretary position. Eight's a resolution awarding a purchase order to converge one for the purchase of extreme network switches and five years' worth of maintenance. Nine are appointments to boards and commission. A is a motion appointing Steve Warrenstead to the Gillian Kosovo Sister City Committee. B is a motion appointing Cheryl Reynolds to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Magellan Pipeline for two permanent easements and two temporary easements located at 4144 Street. I'd like to pull that, please. So they are not wavering at all. They want everything. They haven't moved a nickel off.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer.
No, they have not.
I love companies that do very little for our community and then demand this kind of deal that's a vast improvement for their whole property. That's just unbelievable to me, so I want to vote on it. Go ahead.
O'Kane.
No.
Chaner.
Yes.
Scott.
No.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
What happens if we don't do this project now? Because I think the only way we're going to do the project is if we have a project.
If we, we would have to go back to the design, redesign it, to go through the intersection and have an open front.
You're missing my point. If we don't have a project that we're doing this for, then we've approved this, and you're going to pay them, and we may never do the project. I'm not talking the sewer project. I'm talking the reason we're doing this project for a development.
Marty.
I was going to ask, Nicole, could we make the closing subject to closing on other properties?
I'm sorry, could you...
Could we amend the purchase agreement to make the closing subject to the closing on other properties, if development occurs?
Yes, I would recommend if we're looking at making it conditional, I would delete it from the agenda, and so we could take our time to make sure that it's accurate.
I think the mayor would feel better if we did that.
Feel a lot better. I just don't want to spend a hundred-some thousand bucks on easements and then not get anything.
So Marty Doherty, Economic Community Development, I understand the mayor's position. I would point out that the project will provide sewer service for not only the 44 acres or so that we purchased for the, but also the 50-plus acres to the north that we've also recently purchased, so around 100 acres. We have water line there. We don't have a sewer line, so this would provide sewer service to those areas as well. I think that's a benefit and a reason for doing it. Obviously, you could postpone that or do that later, but I think...
I get all that, but we're only doing the hookup for one company. How like...
Initially, yeah, initially, but it'll serve the rest of the property.
You're not, there are people that are, this is running right by, and only one of companies getting theirs paid for.
No, we're offering this to Anderson as well, Anderson Printing and...
You're paying for the hookup?
We're giving them the same deal that we talked about in closed session.
And what about Don Van Rukel and the carpet plant?
Them too, and popcorn, or Jolly Time.
Yeah, Jolly Time.
You did talk to him, because the last time we talked, you hadn't told me. You didn't even know who Don Van Rukel was.
No, we, at that time, we didn't talk to him, no. We're in the process connecting with all of them.
So what are we doing? Is that good enough then, or what are we doing?
The vote was three to two.
I was going to say, I guess it's a matter, then, if now they are going through that and have had those communications, if, unless you would like those assurances, Mayor, then I suppose we...
Well, no, you guys passed. I'm okay. I just, I don't see us doing this sewer line if we don't have something over there. Now, I'm not going to say a year from now we wouldn't have another project, but right now, that's...
That's fine.
No, but we could tie it in. I mean, I was in the majority vote. I could make a motion to reconsider. So I'll make a motion to reconsider the item.
And this was for, because how much is it to just explore this, or how much is...
We're getting an easement.
Exactly, but I'm saying...
And paying for their hookup.
Right.
The total is approximately 100 for the, to extend this up there.
On their property?
Yeah.
No, we were only looking at up to 24,000.
Plus the $70,000 easement, that's what he's asking.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the way it is, then.
Okay.
So...
I don't think there was a second. There's not a motion to reconsider. Dies for last.
He is a resolution acknowledging the regional government enterprise agreement between ASRI and Woodbury County and authorizing city manager to execute and authorize an acknowledgement statement in connection with the agreement. C is a resolution approving change owner number 12 for the contract with RP Constructors for additional work in connection with the airport water main replacement project. D is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with SULAN certified testing for the ongoing utilities flatwork project. I hope that someday in the Public Works Committee, you ask, why do you never actually take proposals for this type of work? Because we never do. And there are other people in this community that perform that. I'm not, and SULAN does an absolutely fabulous job, but it doesn't hurt to check their price once in a while.
All right, we have a meeting coming up.
F, resolution approving amendment number one to the payment gateway services master agreement with Paymentis. Eleven are actions relating to authorizing payments, I'm sorry. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to Brown Note Productions for the Tyson Event Center Fleet Farm Arena Audio System renovation project. B is a resolution authorizing final payment to structural concrete for the Sergeant Floyd River Museum and Welcome Center ramp repair. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. Thirteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Nick, while you're here, I mean, everyone can go ahead and vote. It's not going to change anything, but I just wanted to ask how it went. I haven't gotten to get down there and hear how the audio system is performing. So are you guys happy? How you feel?
Yeah, it went great, yeah. So Brown Note was great to work with, the whole process. They actually came out and helped facilitate the first game on October 6th, so everything's working as expected. Anyone who's been to a game recently probably notices the difference right away. So we are really happy with the service that Brown Note provided. The new speakers are working great. Everything's top-notch. So, yeah, the process was good. Everything's complete, and we're fully operational.
Could you state your full name?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Nick Palmeati, General Manager of the Tyson Event Center.
Sorry, man.
Thank you.
One last question, then. Other older equipment, is anything able to salvage, or was anything salvaged? Do we sell that on our website, or repurpose it for anywhere?
Yeah, Director of Operations, working through what is salvageable and what is not. I know all the steel was already salvaged. Some of the equipment is not worth anything to be quite honest, but for sure, some of it has been, and the steel certainly has been salvaged. So I know our Director of Ops has been working with the city to...
Kind of work some of that stuff, because I just wondered, I mean, I didn't know, you know, the shape of some of the speakers and different things. I mean, if they're not all blown or not all clearly worn, you know, there are other areas of other properties that we have that might need upgrades, or even just some equipment. I just didn't know.
Sure, yeah. I mean, to be totally honest with you, they're several years out of date. You know, I'm not sure they would be good, to be honest with you, but the most valuable stuff was the several hundred pounds of steel.
Scrap.
Right.
That was worth far more than any of the 30-year-olds.
Okay.
Fair enough, man. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, thank you.
I got to go back to E, resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with Ellison Construction for Utilities Concrete Construction Project. Now we can vote on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Passes 5-0. Recommendations of planning zoning. A is a resolution approving a final plot of a subdivision back acre of states located at 1656 162nd Street. Petitioners of Swanger Trust, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second.
Rachel Planner, Michelle and/or Andrew couldn't make it tonight. This was within our exterior two miles. They're basically just splitting off the lot to sell the house. P&amp;Z recommends approval, 6-0.
Anyone to be heard? Passes 5-0. Fifteen's a hearing ordinance rezoning 2000 Leach Avenue from General Commercial to Business Park. The petitioner's Jeff Day, Planning and Zoning recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing's now open.
This is Meyer Towing. They purchased this lot a while back. They also own the lot to the south. This is basically to combine the lots to avoid the split zoning issue and so forth, so...
And they want to invest in the property.
Yeah, they want, there possibly, there's the possibility that they could potentially build a new building on the site, so they want to combine the lot, and this is the first step to do that, so...
Is this south of their existing lot?
This is north, so this is on Leach, and then their main lot is to the south. P&amp;Z was 6-0, approve, so...
Anyone else be heard? Hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move it. Second.
Chaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
I move second and third. Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Chaner.
Aye.
Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Hamilton Boulevard median removal project, Stone Park Boulevard to West Clifton Avenue. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Too bad you didn't take about four or five more of them out along there, as long as you're on a roll, Gordon.
Well, we're not putting them back. They're going to be painted, because they're not traffic controlled, so it's going to save a little bit of money by not pouring those back.
Whole bunch of them we can take out.
There are, and we're going to work on those one by one.
Okay. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Seventeen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Boulevard of Champions Drainage Improvements Project. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Citizen concerns. Any citizen want to be heard? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Pam, did you want to speak?
I have a question for you guys.
Name and address, please.
Cindy Langsah, 1001 Paul, Sioux City. I'm asking the city for approval on Parks and Rec. I'm asking for your approval for the area to be blocked off, the roadblocks at the Anderson Dance Pavilion when you have rental times for weddings. You want the area to be clean and safe, no one to come in and destroy your setup when you pay a lot for it. I have seen kids there do sidewalk chalk, other people playing around, dances going on, homeless people, and I don't want any theft going on when you set up your area. And I talked to a police officer, and he said it would be a good idea to have the council approve it, that all they do is drive by to make sure nothing's happening. But as taxpayers, we should be able to have at least our city council give us that amount of time. Rental times are from 7:00 to 4:00, and 4:30 to 11:00. And as an older person, I'm getting married in June next year, and I would like to have those roadblocks so nothing happens or nothing gets destroyed. And that would be for Parks and Rec, and not just for me, but for anybody further down the road. When you pay for that, you want your area to be nice and safe and nobody coming in and destroying it. So just to have those roadblocks then, then they can take them out, and that's that.
We'll refer that to Parks and Rec. They have a board, and we're having a meeting this week.
Wednesday, joint meeting.
So we'll bring that up Wednesday when we have a joint meeting.
I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Is this the Alvin?
Yeah, yeah, come on up.
I've never been to a council meeting before, so I'm not, because I have to show you your procedure.
Well, welcome.
Name and address, please.
Gail Palmquist, and I'm from Lawton. That's why I haven't been to a city council meeting.
Fair enough.
I'm here, and I thought there were going to be some others here representing the carbon dioxide matter, but evidently, they couldn't get off work on time. So we would like to answer all your questions that you have. If you would make a list of those questions and get it to us, we would be prepared to answer those questions next time.
Okay. Are you with one of the companies, or who are you representing?
No, I represent the landowners.
Oh, okay.
Who are against it?
That are opposing.
Okay.
Okay. We are much too dense, the county, to run this pipeline through it. The safety is a big matter if one of these pipelines would break. And I think you had a map in your folders.
Uh-huh.
That demonstrated, actually, that map was drawn when they thought the plume would extend for one mile, and the one-mile circle is called the death zone. Now, they're saying that the plumes can extend for 1.4 or 1 and 1/2 miles out. And the companies will not give us their plume studies, which makes us very suspicious of what the results of those plumes were.
They won't provide the plume study for you?
No.
Where are you getting this plume study from?
It's called an Aloha. It's just kind of a common program that various people have used. So, okay. The main two things about the pipelines for us are the eminent domain, and that's going to affect all of you. It's not going to affect just the farmers. It's going to be anybody in town, too. It can be anybody. If a private company wants to come and use your property for something, all they have to do is declare eminent domain. So, and the other is the safety. That death zone will kill all animals and humans, all vegetative growth in that area. And as I was saying, it's enlarging from what we first thought it was. But those are the two main things.
Okay.
We'd just like to have the city cooperate with us. When I look at that map, I see some areas of the city that might be affected by a broken pipeline. So we're very close to, what is it, Whispering Creek, Whispering Hills? Whispering Creek, right. And there are several areas that go on down towards Sergeant Bluff that are going to be in that range. It's going to curtail your development as far as housing and business is concerned. I surely wouldn't want to build a new business within range of that pipeline. It goes, one of the pipelines goes towards Lawton, and if we had a rupture on the north side of Lawton, it would take out the whole town of Lawton. So I think there are lots of things that maybe we can explain to you that you haven't talked about yet.
Well, we'll have them get their questions, so that you can get them some answers ahead of time.
Okay, that would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else? Matthew.
Well, I'm going to talk about the pipeline, too.
That's all right.
Over a year ago, the Sierra Club partnered with Great Plains Action Society, and invited us as a council to an event that they had at Briar Cliff University. I attended it, and it was very informative. I learned a lot there, had a lot of questions answered. I learned that if we just planted in the green space that we have an unfarmable, unusable farmland in Iowa, it would offset the same amount of carbon as this would. So I also sent out a fair bit of information to all of you as well, everybody on the council.
Was that a while back?
Yep.
Because I know you...
You responded on October 9th.
I was going to say, I'll have to pull it up, then.
Yep, and there's, there is a link to a ton of information from the Sierra Club, which gathered a lot of data, and I think a lot of your questions could probably be answered just through their website alone. It's scary. It's scary that that is going right under our river. One of my major concerns, and I think one of all of our concerns should be being a good steward to our environment and putting a pipeline under a river where if there's a leak or a rupture, would just absolutely decimate any life in that river. I think that's something we should all be concerned about. Not only is that a potential danger, but it also breaks an agreement that the federal government has with the Winnebago Tribe, which is concerning in its own right. So I definitely would encourage you, Alex, if you have questions, to research or send me questions. I've attended quite a few different kind of smaller study sessions with regards to it, and it is something that I think we should be proactive about. Yeah, maybe this won't do anything. Maybe the governor says, you know, this is happening whether you like it or not, and maybe they pave the ground. They certainly haven't been in a listening mood in the past year and a half since a lot of these sessions have opened up. But I think we should still do the right thing personally. And that's it for me.
Julie.
Well, I'm going to talk about Saturday and our visit out to the 185th. We were invited for the ribbon cutting and a tour of the air operations building. It's been a two-year process, $12 million process. What they did was they made it accommodate the air refueling rather than what it was previously, the fighters, right? Just want to make sure I got those planes right. Along with just out there at the ribbon cutting, we had the opportunity to tour, and I tell you, Alex will testify to this, I was like a wide-eyed, wondered kid. I had not really experienced much out there before. I had not really experienced much out there before, and the experience was filled with descriptions of the duties of the staff, it was filled with some short stories about the way they've used equipment, or flights and missions that they had that they could talk about, and I just want to send out a huge, huge thank you to everyone out there, especially to Master Sergeant Sarah Orwig, and to Refueling Specialist Noah Nussbaum for that experience. Now somehow, they talked me, and not Dan, into belly crawling into the back end of that.
Of the refueling.
Refueling plane, yes, and laying on my tummy where they lay when they run the joystick that puts that refueling, and it is small, you are on your stomach, there's no place to go, there's a little chin harness for you.
Where were cameras when we needed?
Yeah, Dan did say he would get me out if I couldn't get out.
And I also offered to get you through the window.
Right, right, there was a very small window they showed us as an escape path.
When we were in the pilot seat.
Yes, and I said, that thing is too small, I'd never make it out, and Dan said, I would help you.
Yeah, the second mistake I made with Julie was she took the pilot seat, I took the co-pilot, and I said, I don't have to work, and the fellow that was with us said, you're wrong, you have to work more than the pilot.
Right, you have to work more than the pilot, but it was such an experience, I enjoyed it much more than I thought I would. I left Alex hanging, waiting for me to leave, because we were having such a good time and a thorough tour, and I plan to go out the next time there's an availability to go fly, so, thank you.
Dan's going, too.
Yep, Dan is going.
Yeah, right. Good luck.
All right, Alex.
Good luck. I would, I would just echo some of Julie's comments, I think that it was extraordinary, and just really a showpiece for the 185th to be able to welcome visitors, welcome men and women who are thinking about going into that field, or just a number of different things, it was really a great addition to our community. I would also say about Saturday, I wasn't able to go attend a lot of them, but I know an extraordinary amount of work goes into Fall Fest, and all of the different things were happening throughout our community. It surely wasn't the best weather for a lot of those types of things, but I would just give a huge shout out to all the staff that was involved. I know Ann Wester does a great deal of work getting information about all those events out there. I know Cone Park went above and beyond with their Cone Acopia event that took place on Sunday, and even the museum, the Railroad Museum, all different places, really, yeah, and I mean, yeah, Tyson had 712 Brew going on, they had a sold-out show on Saturday, then the Queen Show on Sunday. There was a ton going on in Sioux City this weekend, and I know our staff works extraordinarily hard to make sure that all those are available for our citizens, so I just wanted to make sure to give them a thank you and a shout out on that. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor and council, following up on the 185th, I also emphasized with Colonel Todd Miller, what a great partnership we have with the 185th and the city of Sioux City, and I think we were showing that with our presence that day, and, and I know the mayor a few words in that regard as well. Secondly, and lastly, Simcoe Certs is having its dedication and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new facility at 6401 Gordon Drive, that's this Friday, October 20th, starts at 12:00 noon, and we're really excited for Simcoe and Certs to have such a facility available to them, and it's going to be an exciting day, so that starts at 12:00 noon this Friday. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I move we adjourn. Second?
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?